County has to come in after the fact and restore that surface and bring it back to to the state we expected it to be in. So we've defined what constitutes a tournament, what constitutes a special event, what constitutes travel ball, and then we have laid a fee schedule. Now, the fees are payable at the time of reservation. We have been trying real hard to work with people to allow them to pay a little bit at a time, to make refundable deposits, and the bottom line is people are taking unfair advantage of that situation. So we're proposing that any fees that are paid to hold a reservation are non-refundable. This will particularly come into effect for for Mr. Coleman with respect to some of his turn tournament reservations. We are also taking that travel ball practice field fee and making it a monthly fee. And what that's going to do, $300 per month gets you up to two practice days per week where a particular field will be designated to you and only you and your team. So it won't be one where, hey, from two to three, travel ball team A has it on Sunday. It's not like that at all. For the entire month of March, Field A will go to this team for them to use during designated practice times. Practice times will always be subordinate to our tournament scheduling and county uses as we see fit. That's understood. We're going to have all those people sign a use agreement so they understand what they can and can't do on the field and how they need to take care of it. We've adopted across the board fees. These are not new fees. These are just new fees for this resolution. There are some slight increases, about $25 in some cases, $50 in others. The bottom line, guys, and they're here to talk about it if you have questions, this is something that we need to do to modernize how we make our very, very nice, very top-flight facilities available to people, particularly people that are making for-profit uses. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them, but the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2025 R-10.
Okay, uh, board members, any questions, inputs, or Clint, the organizations that were contracted to run such as Babe Ruth Baseball, Girl Softball, Soccer, et cetera, right on. Real quick, can you explain, because me and you understand the calls that we get, I don't have nowhere to practice this type. What's their, and the days that are reserved for rec ball, rec play? Explain to the board, if you're real quick, what their guidelines are that, because I try to explain to people, get with your, whoever's heading up your organization, that they can set forth practice days even if there's not an organized thing going on. You know, because the, some of them people are throwing it all on the commissioners that we just keep the fields locked where nobody can ever go in there and play. I'm not agreeing to at will, but the organizations have the opportunity to set forth a schedule that rec ball players can come and practice if they're willing to take the lead. Somebody's got to be there to monitor it or take care of it.
Right. Well, and what we're running into, Commissioner, as it used to be back in the day, there was a good volunteer base that was always there involved with these leagues. You have a very limited group of volunteers now that are running these leagues. So a lot of those guys are not there to unlock the fields and all that. So you have, you know, little Johnny out here that wants to come practice with his dad. Well, you get that attitude, I'm a taxpayer, I should be able to go in there anytime I want to. Well, they don't understand that we have, all of these fields have lease agreements with Babe Ruth Baseball, Columbia Youth Soccer, whatever the organization is, we have a lease agreement with those folks to run their recreation ball in those facilities. And that's what we're getting away from. The recreation leagues now are really and truly reverting to travel ball leagues. I mean, 90% of the board members that are on these leagues are travel ball coaches. So you get that back and forth between what's rec ball and what's travel ball, and we should be able to go out there whenever we want to. Now, if you're registered with our office on travel ball, Wednesdays and Sundays have always been the designated days. But what we're running into is you have a league, and I'm not going to throw any league names out there because they have multiple teams per leagues, but you have an organization that's based out of Alachua County. You have a coach here in Columbia County that has a team in Columbia County. Well, he comes and registers, but then everybody else involved that organization is coming here to practice. We got one team for an organization registered, and you've got five teams here practicing. So what ends up happening is when you actually have rec ball people that's going out there to practice with their kids, oh, today, the field's already taken. We were here first. So we're getting into this tit for tat, you know, they're not separating the fact that they're a travel ball coach, but they're also the president of the league. So we're getting more and more of that going on. So that's why we got to implement more of this. If you want to practice on our fields and you're a travel ball organization, you're going to have to pay to do that. We've got to have it to cover our maintenance costs and our end, but also eliminate this back and forth. Now, to answer the second part of your question, Tim, you know, if, if I want to go out there and practice with my kid and it's a rec ball day, those folks are supposed to be coordinating with the group that's running that facility. And if a group, that facility, if they have a field available and they're not practicing on it, it's up to that organization to let those folks in. And we get criticized about keeping the fields locked up. When my guys leave there, we're not going to leave a facility unsecured and unlocked for somebody to go out there and spin doughnuts on the field or go have a birthday party and destroy everything because that happens on a regular basis.
That's right.
Um, so when my guys leave there, the fields are locked up. That organization that has the use agreement for baseball, softball, adult softball, whatever, if somebody's out there practicing, they need to be coordinating with that league to get those gates unlocked and all that. Wednesdays and Sundays is designated travel ball days. Again, we're not just going to leave the place wide open for anybody to go out there because we just had two teams from Ocala, Florida, Marion County, that were coming up here to practice because we don't charge anything up here. So they're driving from Marion County to come up here and practice.
Every day.
How many days a week?
On Wednesdays and Sundays.
They drive all the way up here to practice.
Through Gainesville, to Columbia County.
If you go to, if you go to Alachua County, the Newberry area down there.
Past Newberry.
$30, $30 per kid per month to practice on their fields. A lot of the fields in Marion County, if you're not affiliated with their recreation leagues, you're not allowed on the fields, period, unless you're there to play in a tournament.
Because they're having the same trouble we have.
Exactly.
It's a statewide issue.
You know, um, I've been criticized and called the field Nazi for years. I don't care. That's part of my job. But we recently just locked up Mason City Community Center's field. The community center locked it up because you're going down there to pay to have a family reunion? You want to get out there and have a family softball game? And we got a travel ball team from Union County down there having a fundraiser telling the people they can't get on the field that they paid for. So.
How often, and I know Chairman knows a lot more about this than he does, Stu, but in my opinion, whatever you want is what I'm going to go with because we don't have enough experience at it, in my opinion.
And we're not, Commissioners, we're not doing anything to upset the apple cart. We're simply catching up with times based on what the surrounding counties and what other people are currently doing. But we've been taken advantage of because we haven't had this level of rule or fee structure in place. So everybody's coming here and abusing our facilities.
And that's a lot of cost, maintaining, upkeep of those fields. I mean.
Well, and the picture that Joel was talking about, that showed him, was a few weeks ago, we had a rain event that afternoon. It was a Wednesday, travel ball day. Well, instead of the coaches using common sense and saying, hey, there's standing water on this field, they went ahead and got out there and ran drills. Well, when you run drills in a practice and it's over and over and over in the same spot, I mean, I had a mud rut where it actually soured and killed the grass in a foot wide area all the way across the outfield. It'll take me a month to get that to grow back in and to get that turf back in good shape. Practices are way worse on a field than games and tournaments and all I'd ever thought about being. Because when I hit the ball during a tournament, it may go here, it may go there. When you're running drills, you're doing 15 kids over and over and over in that same spot. I'm going to hit it right there to Mr. Kirby every time. So we're just, this whole fee structure and stuff we're doing is just bringing Columbia County up to where a lot of the surrounding counties and the other areas are. Our fees are very moderate. A couple of the fees he was talking about going up $25 and $50 is on some of our like rental at Alligator Lake. We've been $100 since we opened that park in 2001.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, so we're updating a lot of that stuff to get us where we need to be to cover some of our costs.
Well, the, we appreciate what you do, Clint. And I'm tickled to death to hear about the $500 deal written non-refundable because that's been a scam since the day we started this stuff years ago. So that's, that's going to resolute a lot of that problem.
Well, and Chris has done an outstanding job since we hired him on looking at some of this, and Chris has noticed it, and we've had several conversations about it. If, if I'm hosting tournaments in North Florida, I'm going to book a spot in Jacksonville, I'm going to book a spot in Lake City, and I'm probably going to book one in the Panhandle.
Yeah.
Wherever my team starts signing up the quickest is where everybody's going. Well, you've got a date locked up in Columbia County. You know, I'll get my deposit back, so it's no big deal. Well, Chris could have booked two other events on that weekend, but because it's already held by somebody. So if, if that money, if they know they're not getting it back, they're less apt to say, well, I'm going to book Lake City. Well, I'm going to lose $500 if I do it.
Right.
So it eliminates a lot of that double booking just to, to keep somebody else from booking in your area.
Yep.
Whatever you think.
It'll work. Okay. Thank you, Clint. Commissioners, any other input? Okay. We'll have to vote on this. So I seek a motion for Resolution 2025 R-10.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you. All right. Joel again?
Yes, sir. And I'm just being as controversial as humanly possible today. The, the next item on the agenda is a potential donation of lands from the Swanee River Water Management District to the county. In 100% transparency, this is a hill property adjoining Buck Glenn and serving the Lance Water Utility. I gave you a memo there that kind of outlines the parameters. We had originally gone to the district to talk about acquiring right of way for, it's currently a private road, but it's called Buck Glenn. I think most of y'all are familiar with it, as well as the adjoining property to the south, all the way to the subdivision. We also sought a right of way on the south of that subdivision that would allow us to access the well that serves Lance Utility, Lance Water Utility towards the back. I will tell the board, you know, we're, we're working on getting out from under our receivership situation with the Lance Water Utility. And to the extent we're going to do that, it's in the county's interest to own that well so that whatever happens, we can control who that well goes to. With respect to Buck Glenn, the board heard from a gentleman who spoke at the last meeting about some concerns with his, his property there. By taking this donation, the county will then have the ability to address that issue if there is a way to address it. Right now, we have no power. The district is willing to donate this in the response that I've provided to you. However, there's a parcel of land to the south of the southern part that I wanted that they're adding because it eliminates a boundary dispute issue for them. And that's where you see a, a different boundary that's drawn in Mr. Reeves' counterproposal. I do know that the district will be considering this at their next meeting. They've already placed it on their agenda, I think, for Tuesday. But they are doing that subject to what your wishes might be. And so what I'm really seeking here is board direction, is there interest in pursuing this? And if there is, and if you vote for that, I will relay that to the district for their information for next Tuesday.
Well, this is in my district. And I know the two people that sitting here on a piece of property in the Swanee River wants to kick them off because it's their property. One of them's been there, I know, 20, 26 years, maybe something like that. So I'm, I'm interested in too, trying to acquire this so we can get these people out of limbo, wanting to know if they got a place to live or whatever to stay. So that's what I'm asking.
That's all the two lots on Buck Glenn you're alluding to?
Yeah.
But is it just those lots or the whole?
It's, it's every, if you look at the drawing, so I went north of Buck Glenn a little bit and came over in case we ever decided. So anytime, Mr. Kirby will tell you, anytime we have an opportunity to acquire a right of way, we're generally going to take it because at some point in the future, we may want to go in there and push a county road. You know, this will allow us to do that. I know for a fact, some of the folks that live further up Buck Glenn have that understanding is that at some point in the, in the future, that would somehow become a public right of way. So again, when the, when the district kind of indicates that there's willingness there, I went ahead and reached out. The south side, where the, the well is at the back of that subdivision, so I took a strip along the south of the subdivision so we can access that well because as it turns out, you can't access that well from the northern property. When I made that suggestion, that's when I got the feedback from Mr. Reeves, hey, we'll give you this, or I'm going to ask my board to give you this, but I want you to take this additional little piece. And if, and that additional little piece that goes to the south there, it looks like about the size of one lot, it's, it's behind another developed property. And the district believes there are some encroachment issues between those two properties. So they'd rather, if there's encroachment issues, they be our issues. I don't really view them as issues. But that's where their counterproposal came from.
Mr. Chair, additionally, there are utility lines in the Buck Glenn easement.
There are.
And we're obviously having to be responsible for them. We have it in our control. It makes it easier to repair and maintain them.
And to my knowledge, north of there also, on the other adjacent portion of property. And that, that's my, that's kind of my pet peeve because I'm sitting here looking at this. I don't want nothing to do with the lake. And I, you know, at the end of the day, we all know the story behind this whole thing for the past 20 years. You're not going to satisfy everybody in understanding, but we had a brief, we had a meeting and then it led into a discussion about this the other day, myself, Joel, Lance Hill, relevant to this cause here. And what's, what's Swanee River need with the property to the south of the well right of way? Nothing. What do they need with the property to the north? Nothing. My recommendation would be if we're going to do this, and I'm 100% for, you know, because the older gentleman, the young man that spoke the other day, his father, you know, apparently quite elderly, 27 years, I think, in residence of this thing. Irregardless of, you know, Swanee River, these people, and nothing against them, they haven't even paid lot rent. They haven't paid trash assessment. They haven't paid nothing since this deal's kicked off.
Right.
So, you know, we're helping Swanee River as much as I can see this here. I would, my recommendation would be, I would have no problem accepting this with the caveat that we take the property on the south and the property on the north up. They've already put a fence in. If anybody's out in that area, the Swanee River has went in there and totally capsulated the pond on what I call Hill Pond growing up. And so that pretty well sets a perimeter as where they're at. And I know for a fact, on the property on the north side of Buck Glenn, there are utility lines that run up to the top of that hill and that are currently capped, but that tie into Lance Hill Water System. So that would be my recommendation. And that's a, I think it's, I don't think it's asking for much. It's, it's going to, you know, irregardless of what lawsuits and stuff do in between somebody and, we all got the email from Joel yesterday, bringing us up to date with the other issues on, you know, from whatever corporation was that Mr. Hill owns, you know, that they're doing. I can't remember the name right off, but yeah, that's just, I'd like other people's input. I mean, because, and, and at that time, it appears to me, we're trying to get rid of this utility that we don't need, you know, don't want, and just give the property back to the utility and let it, let it roll.
So if I could, because you brought up a couple of points there. If you all remember, a few years ago, we had negotiated really what was a three-way interlocal agreement that if the county would maintain the dam and raise the pond and all that stuff, then there'd be a conditional donation of the rest of this land, and that if then Mr. Hill would have signed some sort of a release that said, I'll never sue anybody again, then we would have had the ability to transfer that back to Mr. Hill. Y'all remember that? And that fell apart because there was some new litigation that got initiated, things like that. I've reviewed orders from Judge Jackson. I've also reviewed the opinion of the 11th Circuit Court of Appeal from yesterday. I think some of those release-related issues that we were requiring, like we want to make sure we never get sued again. I can never say we won't get sued again. I, I won't ever say that, particularly with respect to this particular circumstance. We have more protection now than we did two or three years ago. If we leave the pond out, like, I think what I'm hearing you say, Commissioner Murphy, leave the pond out, leave everything north of the fence out, but you want everything else to the south.
Correct. And just dedicate it to the utility.
I think from a risk management standpoint, from a risk avoidance standpoint, which is obviously one of my chief concerns in this job, I think that's kind of a reasonable way to go. And so if that's what the board would like to do. Now, there is a very tiny little sliver. It actually is 12 acres, but it's very narrow and tall. It's at the top of their counterproposal. If we were to pick that up, Mr. Kraus and I've already discussed, we'd probably bring that back to y'all and ask you to surplus and let us sell it to the adjoining property owners. Because it's, it's clearly just some random, got left off of a survey, and it's, it's nestled between two subdivisions. So if, if, if you'd like the proposal to be that we ask for everything but the pond, that's the motion I'd suggest you make.
The fence goes right here right now, so it's all this and all this.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the pond, you know, but right now, they've got a, this is an old picture, but right now, for the discussion in the public, there's a lime rock road that they just previously put in here, and they fenced this whole pond off. So that would be your barrier, that would be your property line.
Right. Yeah, okay. I agree with that, yeah.
That would be my proposal.
So you make that into the motion?
I'll make that into the motion.
All right. I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Not seeing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed.
Mr. Chair, the clerk has a question.
Okay. I'll make the motion. I will make the motion to, to make a proposal to Swanee River Water Management that we will take the property in question in, as a donation in addition to the property to the south and the property to the north to the newly dedicated property line as the fence allows around the pond, known, the pond being quote Hill Pond.
And I, and I understand what you're saying, sir. I'm familiar with that.
I need to resecond that.
Yeah, you'll need to second that.
I'm going to second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you. So if you can interpret that tomorrow afternoon, give me a call, okay? Okay.
And I will, just to be clear, I'm going to relay that back to the district. The district will consider that on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay. While, while we're on this, what, what is going to happen to the two pieces that the people are living on? How are they going to?
So that they're still under notice from the district. It's my understanding, nothing's, you know, really happened in terms of actually compelling them to leave the property. I did advise Mr. Bumgardner on the way out, just, you know, not really legal advice so much as common sense. Like unless somebody shows up with a court order telling you to leave, don't go anywhere. We're going to work. We've got a bunch of different irons in the fire on this front. But I do understand your objective, and I think it's the county's shared objective to not have those people be forced out of their homes.
Right. Yeah.
So that's where we're pushing it with, there's just, there's too many, too much uncertainty with what that's going to look like. But I do know the overall objective is to not make them.
And I can understand that you start doing them fires and the trash.
There's, 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 there's things we'll address. And this, by accepting this donation, we will have the powers to address those issues. Right now, we don't. Mr. Chair, the last issue I had, because I'm a glutton for punishment, is to show you the proposed new rebidding policy for county contracts.
Okay.
We, we got together on staff level. Y'all remember Mr. Kirby talked to you a few meetings ago about the fact that we were running into weird situations where mandatory rebids were coming up that were likely to result in substantially increased contract prices. And so we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot with our mandatory policy. So what we came up with was a policy that says, the first question is, is your contract administrator satisfied with the performance of your contractor on an objective basis? So can he point to them being late? Can he appoint to them delivering the wrong product, things like that? If he's dissatisfied or she's dissatisfied, that's going to be the first part of the report. We're just going to go to rebid, right? If, if they're not somebody we're interested in continuing to do business with, we don't need to do the rest of the process. If the contractors, contract administrator is happy, they're going to reach out to their contractor at least 90 days before termination or expiration and say, hey, do you think you could continue to do this contract for less than 3% more than what you're doing it for this year? So the final year, if you can do next year for at least, or for less than 3% more, and they say yes, then that person will be then immediately authorized by board policy to begin negotiation for an extension. Now, understand, even if they negotiate an extension, that has to come back to this board for approval. Whether it be a one-year extension, a five-year extension, whatever it is, it has to come back to you guys. You will approve it. And you will be free to say no. And if you say no, then we'll just go to bid.
So will that, that, that additional time is going to be the initial 3%?
Correct. That next year has to be no more than 3%. So if it's $100 this year, it has to be, it has to be $103 or less next year. Now, what it looks like beyond that, you guys will have a look at that, right?
Okay. So we can, we can actually agree to give them more?
You could. You could say, look, I'll do an escalator each year. But again, it's something you're going to review. We're trying to incentivize our current contractors, who we like.
Okay.
To come back to us with reasonable numbers and lower numbers so that we don't have to rebid and potentially see increases of 10, 12, 13%.
But after that year, he can, he can rebid at a reasonable rate and still us don't have to go back for three?
It would depend on what they negotiate. So if your contract administrator, let's say I go to Kevin, and Kevin's doing my paving contracting, and I, and he's doing it for $100 this year. I say, Kevin, can you do it for $103 or less next year? He says, yes. Well, Kevin's going to say, I can only do that for next year. Well, then we might negotiate a one-year extension. But if Kevin says, hey, look, if I can lock this in, I'll lock it that price for five years.
Okay.
Well, then we'll try to negotiate that.
Right. Okay.
You're going to see that, right? County manager's going to present this back to you and say, hey, contract administrator negotiated this. It looks like a good deal to us. We're going to have a staff opinion. You guys will ultimately approve it. If it's more than 3%, so the, the contractor says, no, man, I can't do it for less than a 3% increase. The contract administrator's then going to notify county management, hey, we got one that looks like it might have to expire. County management will then have the ability to reach out with purchasing to the contractor and say, look, we know you can't do it for less than three. Can you do it for less than five? And if they say, yeah, I could probably figure out a way to do it for less than five, then the county manager's going to ask you for permission to, to negotiate. So you'll see that for the first time there. They're not going to be able to do it automatically, but there's enough wickel room. You guys will have two cracks at that apple. You'll be able to decide whether or not to authorize renegotiation, and then you'll get an opportunity to authorize whatever does ultimately get negotiated. The important thing is, we're not going to rebid yet. Because once you go to rebid, the cat's out of the bag.
Yeah.
If, if the county manager comes and says, hey, they can probably do it for less than five. It's going to be more than three. What do y'all think? And you say, no, 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 that doesn't sound right. This should cost less money. Whatever the case may be, y'all have that chance to vote. You can vote no negotiation, go to rebid right there. Alternatively, we go to rebid, they come back with something that's too close to 5% and y'all still don't like it. You can say no then. So you've got several opportunities to say no. We're trying to avoid, the only thing we're trying to avoid is, man, I know you could have done it for less, but the board said, you know, seven or eight years ago, I have to rebid it, so I'm going to rebid it. And lo and behold, you ring the dinner bell at that point, right? And you end up paying 7, 8, 10, 12% more. And Kevin and I were talking about this the other day. In the environment we're in right now with so much global uncertainty, you could be talking about 20, 30, 40% type numbers in the next few years or so.
Mr. Chair, to summarize it, right now, whether it be a three-year contract or a five-year contract, we don't even discuss it. My guy's going to be, contract expired, we organize it, go to bid. This, anything we're talking about doing will be transparent in the public. It just eliminates the mandatory rebid after three years, four or five years. That's all it does. It throws a ton of options out of that.
Well, the thing about it is, like me and you were talking the other day, Kevin, some of your, our contracts, such as concrete, grass, what have you, it puts, it gives that contractor also an opportunity to plan the future and control their overhead costs because, as we all know, small business, you know, the, the operational costs is what's kicking everybody's tail right now. So, and we also, we, at the end of the day, we've got the opportunity to say, yeah, you're right. And so it's not a automatic go. So.
In every scenario, in every scenario, it comes back to the board.
I think it's a good policy. Okay. So if nobody else has anything, I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to, to approve, right, to approve past number. Make a motion to, to approve, right, to approve pos number 2025-01.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be quiet now.
All right. Oh, boy, Kirby, let's go.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, for those of you that do not know, many years ago, we carved out what we call capital projects out of a operating budget. Uh, we agreed at that time that on a quarterly basis, I would update you folks amongst the public as it relates. I would like to point out two things. If you would have ever told me we were north of a hundred million dollars in capital projects in Columbia County, I thought you were crazy. I would like to point out the other, I'm real pleased with our guys that on the back-to-back behind all the hurricanes, we still kept this going at the rate we did. So that being said, we'll start off with the grant-funded projects. Out at the Intermodal Park, we did turn the sewer plant on Friday, so that project is substantially complete. That leads us to the next comment, and when I was putting this together, and I'm not requesting any vote, this is simply an update. Out at your water treatment plant at the Intermodal Park, so as you can see on your screen, you have about five, five and three-quarter million dollars. And though we paid for it out of a few different line items, this was the project in the timeframe, there was absolutely zero relationship between us and the city. We had a consumptive use permit issue, or they did, I should say. So we worked real hard, now we have the consumptive use permit. Well, line item number one, things have changed. We have partnered with the City of Lake City for basically a two-year contract because what David and I found out amongst the process, it's the chicken and egg theory, you gotta have utility staff customers. Well, we found that the overhead cost and all that good stuff of what it costs to run the sewer plant on our side before we had enough customers, that was very significant. This particular project right here, that five and three-quarter million dollars, that is not going to give you a water plant, that's not going to give you your lateral lines. I'm hearing numbers around eight million to do the water plant plus the lateral lines. I will be coming back to you at a later meeting before we get too much deeper in this project, not saying that that need to be done in the future, but in my opinion, as I'm going through this list, we have a lot of fish to fry. If, and it's a big if, you gotta bring your consumptive use permit value to the table, you gotta talk to City of Lake City, if they're willing to partner with us for a period of time, to get beyond that, Kevin Kirby's of the opinion, you do, I'm not of the opinion, it's a fact, you don't have enough money to put a water plant out there, you do not have enough money to run your lines out there. If we can partner for a period of time with the City of Lake City as it relates to water, I think that's gonna be a very smart move. So I just, while I'm on that conversation, I will be coming back up with a good explanation in the immediate future on that. Okay. Down at Ellisville Fort White, so people say, when are you gonna get started, when are you gonna get finished? I'm gonna comment on several times on this as we go down here. We are hooked up, the water line is hooked up, but this day and time, there is more bureaucratic red tape with these construction projects that there is boots on the ground. So we are hooked up. We were in the process of reaching out with DEP and all the alphabet agencies to get what I call the red tape bundle. There's a creature called a RFI out there, so when I say we're gonna be done in 30 days, that's a shot in the dark, because they say 30 days and they hit you on day 28 with a RFI, request for additional information, and it starts all over. It's a tool they have in their toolbox that does not put them on a timeline. But for the update today, we are hooked up, but there are certain red tape paperwork that has to come with that to make that officially hooked up. Does that make sense? So if you're to ask me today, April 1, but I have no control over DEP. Ellisville well-free redundancy, FDOP permit complete, bid docs completed by engineer and submitted to procurement. You have two wells today in Ellisville. We just said we run a water line Fort White. We know what Ellisville's doing today. We're preparing to drill a third well for obvious reasons, supply and demand, and if something tears up, right now, you're limited, we don't have enough starters for an old Jeep, one tears up, and we got a lot of moving parts that we keep adding to it. State Road 247, Canyon Creek, this is your old Quail Heights Country Club. We are moving forward, we're finalizing water management permitting review and issuance. We're going to construction this summer. This is your pond that accommodates Canyon Creek and supports the 247 expansion done by FDOT. We will construct and maintain using the funding available, construction this summer. Farnell Hills, a dirt-to-paved conversion, it is under construction. Hydri Acres is, uh, under construction, we're in the clearing and grubbing phase. Queen, Shambria, Winfield, contract is complete, we'll bill up retainage and clean the job up later on next week. Up on County Road 6, construction is complete, we're invoicing, once again, cleaning that up, we'll be through with it next week. Richardson Historical Repair, we're in the design phase. Fire Station Administration over on Lake Jeffrey Road, which has broke ground, it is under construction. Bethlehem Community Center, 99% complete, basically punching it out, so we'll call that substantially complete. Traffic Study, this is your study, it is underway county-wide. This will give you the information you need to make a priority list of corrective action inclusive of dangerous intersections and other problematic areas. Be reminded, this will give you the study, this will not give you the funding that's needed to provide corrective action. Horton Stillman, so on these next two projects, the reason you see zero on the funding, all the funds are administered by the FDOT and they're working on that right now. We basically do all the heavy lifting once the funding is in place and it is being put in place. Sky John Jordan, once again, waiting on bid documents, same as one before, you'll see your orange signs on County Road 240 from Tuscaniki Road over to 247, that project is underway. And Commissioner Murphy, we did get the millions and all put down at 240 that we talked about, waiting on a survey and it'll be in about a week and a half as we discussed yesterday. Okay. Down in Ellisville, Ellisville, Howe and Farnell, so we're gonna call that three phases. One is the Farnell Road, new construction and vacating of current Farnell grade, that project is out to bid. Phase two, which is the construction of the quadrant road through the cow pasture, rather behind the SNS, that will go to construction this summer. Later on in the fall of this year, you will rebuild the on-off ramps to work on 41 itself, which is phase three. Phase one's out to bid, phase two in the construction, phase three in the later fall of this year. Swanee Valley Tower, surveys complete, waiting tower maps and design. 500 acre sport park, where Clint and I finalized the RFQ yesterday, this will give you a set of plans on what we call phase one, this is where your TDC dedicated and matched the 750,000, and, uh, that project is now officially a project. So you'll have your set of plans and whatnot, we did that yesterday. EOC complex design, design only, it's out to bid. Bell Road, so over on Bell Road, the million dollars you see, let's be very transparent about that, what is that gonna give you? That's gonna give you a set of plans and partial acquisition of property, then you're out of money again. This takes the current job over to the west, US 41. That's gonna give you a set of plans and it will be a little money left over to start the land acquisition. We did use the same engineering firm that took us down the first phase of Bell Road for common sense purposes, they already had started it, that is happening as we speak. Out at the Intermodal Park, Tire Road, so the developer is providing the funding to do the design, et cetera, the money you see in front of you is your construction money. So once the developer gets us back our design, and mostly guys, this is going to accommodate your turn lanes and whatnot on US 90 East to allow for your entrance on what is now Tire Road and even about a thousand-foot of roadway, but now you'll officially have an entrance out on the, uh, Intermodal Park. Dorch Street, okay, I wanna talk about that one just a minute. We're always talking about what we do and do not do down at Fort White. And used to, I never talked about this kind of stuff, but I would like to talk about it today. You see, we had a $512,000 operating budget in totality. We spent $60,000 to get the job ready. We opened up business today at roughly $600,000. On top of that, we're gonna do all the CE hour, that's always 15% of a job. All my time this week searching for the extra money to do the job, and we're gonna find the extra money. But when people say we don't do anything in the town of Fort White, that's simply incorrect. That's an example that we used to never talk about, we do it all the time. So you start on 512, you spent 60, you got a $600,000 bid, talking about basic math, 15% of 600,000 to do the CI work, plus all the laborious efforts we did with DOT and everybody else trying to figure out the money. Long story short, we got bids and money, okay?
I don't know if we ought not have our own webpage telling me what we're doing for a while.
Okay, I just had.
Rocky does especially.
I had to throw it out there, okay. So we started off roughly a hundred million dollars, we've done roughly $50 million worth of work on the grant side of things and we're pressing on. Prior to going to county side of things, do y'all have any questions?
Kevin, I'll roll back to the front page, please. Not quite there, okay. Yeah, we, we had a, myself and Rocky attended the utility meeting yesterday and we had a bit of discussion on, you know, some of the plans that was gonna continue on and where the future lies with the utility. And, you know, we talked about the well field that's out there at the North Water Bay, it's an industrial yard, of course, David, they have some conversation relevant, you know, because there's some of these industrial users that are going to be needing raw water. And of course, with all the extended cost, you know, it seems like, as you said earlier, you know, we, we're, we're very early into a two-year agreement, and everybody's got their fingers crossed, thinks things are gonna work out, stars are lining up, looks good right now, and it's operating. So, you know, that five billion, David, I would assume would be, the remaining 5.4 million could be used in extending the line to, towards the city water plant, is that correct?
What that is for is you went to a legislative appropriation.
Correct.
Um, right now, the plan is to put in the well fields and run a raw water line to where the sewer plant is, adjacent to where the water plant would be.
Correct.
So that is currently where that money is targeted, um, obviously.
Is that the estimated cost to get it, the well field in and bring it to there?
Yes. No, it does not build you a water plant and it does not take lines from that water plant and put it in the industrial park.
Understand. Because there's no doubt, I mean, common sense says that, you know, even, you don't wanna, when raw water is only needed, if we have another consumable water supply, you know, you wouldn't want to waste money on a.
Right.
A plant to treat raw water naturally. But the, you know, it just seems like it's, it's just the way we gotta do business today because a lot of moving parts are here and everything is costing a lot of money, I get it. And of course, you know, we got our first project off of running, thank God didn't take a lot of consumption as far as that goes, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Rock.
I'd just like to say, I think there's a misconception out there that if the city does the water and sewer, then it's no cost to the county. I, I, I would just say, whatever happens out there, we can turn everything over to the city, but at the end of the day, the county's gonna have to spend money out there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, we're spending money at 47 and 75 right now. That project would not be happening right now if the county did not agree to spend that money.
You made the point yesterday, right.
So just 'cause you, some people think the idea, you can turn everything over to the county, we're done with it, that's, that's not true.
And to confirm your point, sir, that's, that's why I made the comment, for right now, today's purposes, you do not have enough money in the kitty. Once again, as we partnered with the city.
We all knew that already. I think we all, I, I knew that, I, we've talked about it several times in the utilities, that we've got enough money to drill the wells and run raw water lines to the treatment plant where the water plant's going to be built. And I see no reason we hold that project up, we have grant funding for that, then we move forward with that.
So once again, I wasn't requesting a vote today, my mathematics, my comment is, is you do not have enough money for the 5.7 to get raw water, that's my, that's my opinion. I might be wrong.
So for clarity's sake, the only water infrastructure is the one 12-inch line that runs along US 90. There is no water infrastructure that leads into the park, there's no water infrastructure that leads to any particular site that would be developed at some point in the future. All you have right now is the one 12-inch line that the city owns that runs along US 90.
Right. A hundred percent, I think the, the well field needs to be completed as designed and water taken to the area, because I mean, at that point in time, you know, it is what it is, I mean, it's up to, I mean, it's just that one line running in there, the city's got ran in there now to sewage plant, correct?
Well, it actually runs all the way to the prison.
Well, I realize that.
So we have a connection where we tied into that line and our service line runs from US 90 down into our plant, because, you know, if we're running lab for the personnel uses, for drinking, you needed potable water.
Which the plan is now, agri liquid will be using, they'll be tapping into the city also.
At this point in time, yes. So a sewer plant can use raw water, but there are some potable uses, no matter what, you know, you have people.
Sure.
They have to have potable water.
And we have that already with the city.
So we have that tap and that commercial, we pay, we are a customer of the city, so that, that water plant or that sewer plant has potable water. But the only infrastructure they have is that line that runs along 90.
Okay. Okay, we ready to county?
Yep.
Okay. Down on US 27, River Rise Boat Ramp, we're out to bid from Island Park, waiting on a permit for our dock construction. Micro soft exchange, software is being ordered. Courthouse, Chiller and Bowler upgrade is under contract. Fire Department over on Race Track Road, HVAC, we're working on design. Lift station electrical panels replacement at Ellisville, waiting on quotes. Fire suppression system at 911 EOC, we are waiting documents for permitting. Train one repairs upgrades at Ellisville, waiting on piping completion. Lift station bypass piping repairs at Ellisville are underway. Fort White complex fence is under construction. Alligator Lake Park bridges are out to bid. Jail cooler and freezer replacement, review and scope work, preparing for bid, patrol and cleanup, we're all the way waiting on the construction drawings finally, we're holding up on jail admin at this time. Traffic Ops building is substantially complete. Animal control is substantially complete, we got a little in-house grooming to do. Lake City Reporter Building, so we replaced the roof as best as replacement facial work is currently being occupied by Red Cross Fire Marshal and EMS Contractor. RC Track at Lake Jeffrey and Baskin, we're current in the clearing and grubbing phases. Cypress Lakes and Charles, so we talked earlier about red tape and boots on the ground. I think, might even be more than a year now, orange signs have been up, everybody's driving on it. We are complete with the job. Here's another red tape example, I'm driving home and we're saying we're working on something, we're always working on something, you just don't see it. This was your eminent domain problem, okay? So we left 500,000 in the kitty, you're done with the job, lawyers are still doing what lawyers do as it relates to finalizing with the problematic areas of that job as it related to property acquisition. So job's complete, paperwork's not. That takes you to Mayo Road. So we all understand FDOT, if you submit a dirt-to-paved conversion of them, they want to ensure you have a set of plans, permit, property acquired, so forth and so on, prior to you submitting, that become a rule here eight or 10 years ago, do not submit us until all the front work's done. Your front work is done, you've got a permit, you've got an engineered set of plans, 100% drawings, I turned a green light on yesterday, you have 42 effective property owners, 28 I sent to closing yesterday, right? 28 of 42, now, that leaves you about 14 folks left. We haven't heard from them, that doesn't mean they don't want the job, that doesn't mean they do want the job. That doesn't mean they don't want the job, that doesn't mean they do want the job. So the reason I put Mayo behind Cypress Lakes, when we're criticized, we're running a little behind in some opinions, we're not. Now, you can be bulls in a tunnel closet all day long. We saw what Cypress Lake gets you for that, okay? So we're slow walking it down, 28 of 42. Hopefully, the other folks will see everybody else closing out their neighbors and say, okay, we got us a good project, they'll reach back out to us, okay? But that is, in my opinion, an excellent job for empty consideration, because you're conveniently located between Pine Mount and US 90 to alleviate traffic off the state highway system. Okay, so that's where you have that job. English L. Mary Road is substantially complete. We put the top on that job last week. Abigail and Bond, it's out to bid. Saturn Quentin Falls is out to bid. DeKalb Legion, Tamarack, Upchurch, Foxborough, core's complete, reviewing the bid documents as of last night. Ring Hudson, Green Ridge, Imagine, Rossy, core's complete, we're reviewing the bid docs now. Baskin Norris right away. So we put 600,000, I think it was 600,000, 600,000 in the kitty for a two-lane to four-lane expansion on Baskin Norris Road. We talked about that. We just successfully closed on our first piece of property as it relates to that. State Road 247, I'm sorry, I just jumped on somewhere, I missed Baskin Norris Road. Our current Baskin Norris Road is going to under contract in just a few weeks, guys. And that's going to get, we agreed to put the VMV variable message boards up early and whatnot. I think you might have a concern about that, but that job is going under construction as in this summer. Okay, so you'll see the VMVs go up here shortly on all that. We just talked about all the annual paving, and then I just finished up with the acquisition of your first property to do a two-lane to four-lane expansion. So you got 13 million in the kitty, we started, 3 million have been expended. Now with all these paving jobs we're letting, by the time I come up here next time, that number's going to shift significantly, because you've got millions of dollars of paving coming along. But I'm proud to say, on the grant side of things and on the county side of things, our budgets are good. We did add up 40% back in the day, they would not be. It seems to be tracking pretty true, but financially, we're in good shape. Grant side of things, we're not behind anywhere. On the county side of things, we're not behind anywhere, on top of your hurricanes. So in my opinion, you're in good shape. Are there any questions?
I have one question, I don't know if it's for you or David, Dave, but, and I asked you this the other day, I don't know if David has any. Oh, the money we spent during the hurricanes with FEMA, what's the timeline usually on them refunding that money back to us?
Different storms are different, they change. Just the last couple storms, they were going to try and give us half of it upfront. We spent just right under $8 million, about seven something. I'll give you a full report on that. We'd been kind of exchanging emails on that to give you the actual numbers. So you get half of it. Of course, then the state decides what they don't want to pay you for and what they do want to pay you for. So it could take two to three years total, it could take longer. Last time when we did Debbie, it was what, five, six, seven years?
Almost six. There's a timeframe.
But theoretically, we should get about half of it back within a year or two.
Okay. Yeah, you can get that information.
That all was for? Kevin, on the Queen and Road 6, when are the monies expected on them to come to DOT?
Burley and 6. Burley's off the sheet, we're done with it. Queen be off the sheet after today, we're done with it. So we borrowed that money, the department's going to pay us back, I think at 27. Don't quote, 27 maybe? It's a, it's a time limit out there. But we knew what we were going. Both projects, Burley, Burley and 6 come in within estimated budgets, what we thought they would do, we're buttoning them up. So we're on the green light, we're just going to wait to get our money back. So that, that program worked out extremely well. Once, once again, with all those jobs, you know, the likelihood of hitting that every time without having a bunch of problems, I can honestly say we don't have. We're in good shape.
Well, and I know, just talking to David a couple weeks back, you know, with this 7.8 million, what we're spending here, it brings a lot of light to the fact that the other grant reimbursements, we need to stay on top of them, because we all know what the real dollar in the bank is. So, you know, it's just time that, I think we really, I'll put a big focus on making sure our reimbursements are in line and on time, on the other grant situations that we got, that planes, you know, coincides with everything that Kevin has shared here.
Okay. Thank y'all, guys.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Lance.
Everybody wants a leak.
Yo, I think-
Oh, sorry, bud.
There you go, buddy.
Do you have the guitar?
I don't know if he got your slides. I don't know if Lance got your slides.
So we've got, y'all have the bar graphs, but there's two bar graphs to be upgraded on your EMS provider. They're starting their sixth month right now. Your response time requirements for the contract for your urban should be around 11 minutes for your Bravo Echo responses and 21 for your Alphas and Omegas. And at a 90% rate, they're supposed to hit those. Your rules are supposed to be 17 minutes for your Bravos to Echos, and then 26 for your Alpha or Omegas, and at 90% as well. We pulled the last year from Century. Century was averaging between 80 and about 87% for the last year. Columbia EMS has been bouncing from the mid 50s to up to, last month, they were at 85 and 77 for your two rates.
And those are in your packet.
Okay, y'all have these two bar graphs then.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. So the numbers from Columbia EMS are not possibly, they're not accurate yet. There's a couple issues we ran into with the pulling the data. The first one's going to be for their exceptions, they can request for times and so forth. With the FDLE audits with SmartCop, we haven't been able to give them the live access yet that they need, so they can file for the exceptions and we decide whether to grant the exception or not. The other part is the packets I gave y'all of the contract between Columbia and Century with the two highlighted paragraphs. Columbia has requested, basically, we add these two paragraphs back, which will give them an additional three minutes anytime we put one of our ALS units on scene. Basically puts a paramedic on scene ahead of EMS, and it'll give, buy them an additional three minutes, and that will bring their numbers to a more acceptable range.
So if I may, I think what he's saying is if those things that were inadvertentlyly left out of the contract, if something the board wants to put back in the contract, we can do a modification. Is that correct, Joe?
Yes, and, and so, to be clear, Century had worked out a deal with us when we started measuring their response times, and when we went into ALS, what was that, 18? We, remember, you guys remember, we added ALS to our first responder unit. And at the time, Century negotiated with us and said, hey, we'll provide you with a lot of your materials for your ALS units if we can get credit for those response times, right? It was a way for them to kind of, our objective is public safety. Our objective is that people are getting seen and treated as fast as humanly possible. The ALS units allow us to do that. So we negotiated with Century, okay, you provide the, the materials we need, we'll give you the credit. Well, when Columbia EMS came in, they're still providing us those materials, they're still doing the part that Century used to do, but for whatever reason, it is not in the contract that they get credit for those calls. Again, I think it's an inadvertent omission, that'd be the way I would look at it. I don't have any issue with making this change for them and adding that into the backup contract, so there's no issue in terms of the backup contractor saying, we're not getting the same benefit. The bottom line is we need accurate response time numbers. One of the other issues that Lance kind of briefly touched on was the currency and the accuracy of the data that Columbia EMS has access to. We're finding that because of changes, if y'all remember, we did the combined communication center, we had to move a lot of the server access and things like that for the sheriff, because under FDLE guidelines, only he was supposed to touch those systems. Century had a protocol worked out, we had a system worked out, well, it all just happened to coincide. Now, since Columbia EMS doesn't have the same live data access or the level of live data access that, that Century did. The bottom line is this, are these numbers 90% like they're supposed to be? Not on paper? Are we actually getting response times very close to that 90%, if not better? Lance thinks so, I think so, Columbia EMS thinks so, but we can't verify that without correcting the contract and getting closer to the live data access. We had a nice meeting, the sheriff came, he brought all of his personnel. We think we have a plan to fix the live data issue. This contract issue is the way this board can bring things better, bring things into a better position. So, I mean, I think I'm speaking for Lance here. I think what, what I would like to see is if the board accepts the report, and if you, if you accept Lance's explanation for why there's this disparity, I'm going to go work on a contract addendum to bring back to you guys. And as I said at that time, we'll also approve for the backup contract, just to keep things consistent.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
That works.
Okay, got a motion. No other response, okay. Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Joe, while Lance is tuning down there, when these were taken out, was it any specific reason?
I, I don't have any recollection of there being a discussion about these coming out. I have talked to Mr. Witt with Columbia EMS about it. He doesn't have any specific recollection of it being something that was negotiated. You know, what the circumstances were, all I know is that Columbia EMS continues to do what Century did for us, but they're not getting the benefit of it, it just doesn't make sense. And if you talk about just fundamental fairness, we did this for years with Century with a high level of success. Our ALS units were outfitted, people were getting the kind of service that they needed, and, and our numbers were more correct. Now, I will point out, as Lance showed you, even with the ALS credit that, that Century had, they still weren't hitting that 90%. So Columbia EMS believes, and what they share with us, if we get better data that they can analyze, if we continue to work with them in terms of their logistics, where they are in the county, which we've done, you've done a great job of that, and if they can get this credit, they think they're going to be at or better than these 90% numbers. So it's, it's, it's a success story that's kind of hidden behind some bad data, and so we're going to clean that up, get that back to you. Nobody, at least, I think I'm speaking for the, for staff on this, nobody's at a point where we're concerned about the, the quality of the service we're getting. We're getting the same kind of complaints you're always going to get, people are involved, there's going to be circumstances where you just can't get to people fast enough, we understand that. We're talking to Columbia EMS about way, maybe some of the metrics aren't the way they should be, where they're dispatching in time, but it's just because of traffic and things like that. That's, that's why it's 90% and not 100%.
Right.
But I do think, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like I can speak for staff, we've been very satisfied. It's a startup company, they're getting started from the ground up, we've been very satisfied with what we've seen so far.
Well, I had a conversation with Mr. Crawford prior to the meeting, and it was encouraging to know on this OPO project, Jeff was explaining to us, you know, the funds available there, he's in the process of putting that third ALS together. And at the end of the day, you know, he's going to place it in a centrally located area where, you know, and, and to my understanding, not to put words in Jeff or Todd, Whitergans, not Whitergan, but Waringer, City, Lake City doesn't even have an ALS, correct, Jeff? I believe I'm right. And so, they will be, if they're working towards that, it sounds like, that could be an encouraging thing for the community, you know, and then, you know, then, you know, you look on there and you see that incident up in Conyers, Georgia, you know, where it was just one of them situations where, you know, an ambulance was 40 minutes out, 35 minutes out, you know, of course, somebody lost her life, which was national, so it's a unique situation. But, okay, David?
I think that's one of the reasons why it's important to continue to fund some ALS services through the fire department, because especially in the rural areas, far northern end, far southern end of the county, you know, their unit gets hot on a call, you've got to have coverage. You always, you know, funding ALS in the fire department's very important. So my first item is going to be the emergency communications grant, and I'll go real quick. Basically, you do this every year. This is what funds your maintenance on your 911 system. We're asking you to allow us to apply for it. When it's awarded, if it's awarded, we'll bring it back with the contract and the budget amendment.
I move we approve application, emergency communications board grant.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose.
The next one, again, is something we do every year. You do special assessments for fire, for solid waste, for your streets, for your street lighting. It requires some legal services. We use Neighbors, we've always used Neighbors, Givlin, Nickerson for this. Proposed schedule below $30,000 legal services to do all your assessment work.
I move we approve the proposal for Neighbors, Givlin, and Nickerson for legal service, fire protection, solid waste, roads, and street light.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Hearing no other, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose.
Next one is a short one, it's RFP 2025A. That is your, we want to hire somebody to do your fire and your solid waste assessment studies, that you can then base your maximum rate on what the current costs are and your current revenue requirements. We had two bids, Stantec and Reftellis. Stantec was the one that the staff is recommending that you award the contractor.
I move we approve final rankings and begin non-tract negotiations with Stantec Consulting Service.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose.
This is the Baptist Church, you all know about the vacant lot. They gave us a proposal to lease it. We're asking you to direct the attorney to draft up the lease, if you have any changes in terms you want, now would be the time to mention it, or if you don't want to lease it.
So David, I have one question about that. The parking lots up by the drive-through going to the property, the tax collector's office, do those parking lots go with that lease or just the field in the back right there?
This is just the field. They do not, I believe, own that building anymore.
Oh, is that right?
That two-story building they sold.
Oh, okay.
It gets up for sale again.
It's up for lease, but it is not owned by the church no longer.
But don't get me wrong, I'm still for the parking in the back, too.
We use it.
I make a motion that we have Joe make the contract with the church.
Joe ain't got nothing else to do, let's do it.
The, I've got a motion in the second, before I call for a vote. I, I think it's definitely needed. I was a little, I was a little shocked at $18,000, you know, with a 3% annual increase, you know, going on, the-
Well, I think once we get the reporter building operating, get people over there, we might not need it anymore, so.
There is, there is a clause in there to get out within, what was it, 90 days, something like that? It was in your packet.
But we're parking on it now, and we have been parking on it for years without paying anything, so.
We vote back money.
Yeah, we vote back money.
And if you remember, the original proposal back when Ben Scott was manager, was they were going to have us pave a parking lot and put in a retention pond. This is just vacant lot. They have to cut down a tree every once in a while, got to mow the grass and cover it with insurance.
You think it'd help out with the parking in the front of the building?
If we enforce it.
Because anybody go park back there except for county people.
One possible thing is I could approach the courts and ask them, when they have juries, have the juries park in the grass lot.
Yeah, I would think that would be a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose.
Next one, this one's easy. Beth Lane Community Center, tonight, we're going to meet with them and give them the keys to the building. It is basically done. Like Kevin said, it's substantially complete. As you know, insurance is very expensive. They have no monies because they have not operated before. Commissioner Phillips brought this to our attention, and he's, so we're requesting $3,000 for initial startup costs for the Beth Lane community, it's a one-time expenditure, so they can afford to begin operations.
Recommend motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, very briefly, on those insurance policies, I think we talked about this before, but as you go into this budget cycle, we are telling the community center boards, get your insurance budget together, and if you feel like you need a subsidy from this board, come ask for it when all the other not-for-profits do.
And for-
We tried to work a program where we could just buy one policy for all the community centers, and that was undoable.
Did not work.
So the only way it can be done, they need to go get their own quotes. If they need help from the county, they need to come and ask for it during budget appropriation. If they need help from the county, they need to come and ask for it or a budget appropriation.
Okay.
Bethlehem's just out of order because they're just starting up now.
And their insurance is going to cost anywhere between two thousand five hundred and three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Basically, we're covering their insurance for first year.
Yes. All right, whoop, what happened to that link?
That's it, we're done.
Can I go back to my last two, only two slides left, Lincoln?
You messed up.
I'll be like, my, my batteries died.
So I want to group the last four items.
Hot white rubbing off on the side.
So I want to group the last four items as two items of two items. So the next one would be.
Say that again now?
So the next eleven and twelve, I'd like to talk to them at the same time because they're basically the same thing.
Okay, okay.
Um, it's BA twenty five twenty seven and BA twenty five twenty eight. Uh, this is just accounting, housekeeping, if you will. So as you saw when Kevin did his capital projects, we have a capital projects fund, there's road projects in it, there's building projects in it, there's AC projects in it. The clerk's office said, we have to report transportation projects to the state and the way we do it right now is difficult for them to deal with. So right now we have a transportation trust fund, which is resurfacing in all Kevin's stuff, and we have a capital projects fund, which is everything else. So they're asking, uh, us to basically create a third capital fund, which is just dedicated for road projects. So they would have transportation trust, they have road projects, and they would have all other capital projects. So the next two items, twenty five twenty seven and twenty five twenty eight, is basically moving all that money around. And I put it on your agenda because it is a large dollar amount and I didn't want anybody to think we were just trying to.
You, you need a motion on each one, right?
Need a motion on each one.
I move that we approve BA twenty five twenty seven.
Second.
Got a motion, I'm a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I move that we approve BA twenty five twenty eight.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, not seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
And finally, the last one is BA twenty five thirty and BA twenty five twenty nine, which is the F D O T LAP project and the F D O T SCOT project. So basically, these are projects that you did previous years and approved in previous years. The year ended, we never drew the money from the state. So for us to be able to draw the money from the state and apply it to the capital projects, we're asking you to create these two BAs, which will create the revenue line from the state to allow us to assign it to the capital.
I move we approve BA twenty five dash thirty.
Second.
Got a motion, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
And David, these, these right here are examples of what I was talking about on the reimbursements, absolutely, because these are completed projects, correct?
I don't know, are they complete?
No, okay. Okay, I thought I heard you say they were completed just a minute ago.
They were, um, approved in previous years. I don't know that, they're not complete.
Okay, okay, got you, got you, got you, got you.
I move we approve BA twenty five twenty nine.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Get back over here.
All right. The open public comments, and I think that's a thing of the past, ain't nobody here.
Ain't nobody here.
All right, staff, any more, any comments from y'all?
Oh, we want a real quick one. On April first, there will be a ribbon cutting for the Bethland Community Center at four thirty in the afternoon.